Good evening. I'd like to call the June 10, 2023 meeting of Greenville City Council at Order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. If you'll join me for the invocation filed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Stelly.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, you have a form.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Mr. Manager.
Mayor, I have no changes.
Mr. Attorney.
Second.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, I'd like to add a closed session. A motion to be read at the end of the meeting.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We shall now move on to our special recognitions.
Who's first?
I would like to ask for Donna Rayner and for Jesse Harris and Dwayne Cooper to step forward. So each year, the city, as a way of giving back to our community and to the programs that help support various different individuals and groups within our community, we have a citywide campaign that's run by our employees to raise money to support the United Way. This year, I'm proud to say that the city is in receipt of a couple of outstanding awards, and I am going to first turn it over to Dwayne Cooper, who is the President of the United Way, for the presentation of the first award.
Good evening, and thank you guys for having me this evening. So the first award is actually going to go to the City of Greenville. It's a Campaign Spirit Award for the recognition of outstanding growth for participation in the year 2324. So let me just give you a few highlights very quickly. Two years ago, the campaign was revitalized through leadership and a very interactive campaign committee. This campaign this year has become our seventh largest campaign in the United Way family. It is credited for internal employee incentives and competition to grow involvement. They have provided numerous successful fundraising events throughout the year, including a silent auction, 50/50 drawing, hot dog and dessert sale, raffle event, and for 21 years has had the chili cook-off event that has grown exponentially over the years. Also, this past year, the campaign grew total dollars raised by its employees, given amount by over 56% this year, and it's still growing. And so the Spirit Award this year is presented to the City of Greenville, to Michael Cowan and of course, Ms. Donna Rayner.
So the next award is for an exemplary team member. Let me step this way. And this award goes to Wanda Martin from the Engineering Department. Wanda has been on the City's United Way Committee for the past several years. She has actively participated in all of our campaign events and has enthusiastically encouraged her coworkers to support the United Way. This year, she achieved 100% participation in the Engineering Department. All of its employees donated through our campaign. Wanda has also sold hundreds of tickets for United Way raffles, not just to employees, but to anybody and everybody that she knows. And additionally, she has acquired and even made silent auction items for the chili cook-off and the hot dog sale, and has certainly been there each time we've had such an event to help with everything that goes on on those days. She has been an exemplary member of the City's United Way Committee, and she is most deserving of this recognition.
I tell you what, I would like to say a special thank you to all of our employees that out of the goodness of their heart have decided to donate to the United Way to support the valuable programs that go on within our local community. And thank you, Dwayne, for leading that charge for United Way. And Wanda, most importantly, thank you for everything that you do, not only for engineering day in, day out, but you took a time out of your regular duties within the Engineering Department to go above and beyond to be able to support the citizens of our community. Thank you.
I just want to, I want people to know what the award says. I'm sorry. It says Team Captain Award to Wanda Martin. This award recognizes employee campaign team captain for their outstanding leadership. I just wanted to have a note.
Now, I'd like to ask Aaron Hines to come forward.
You were talking about you, Aaron.
Aaron, yes, we're talking about you because there's a lot of great things to talk about. There is probably no one more special at their talent than Aaron Hines and the content that he produces day in and day out for this city in a way to spotlight the city in a way that shows all the special things that we are doing within the community and by our employees. And the pictures that you take were absolutely breathtaking. And I can say that that's not only recognized locally by the City Council, as well as every single employee of this whole entire city, but it's also recognized by others within the state because Aaron just received the award for the National Association of Government Communicators. Last month, they held their, a conference in their annual Blue Pencil and Gold Screens Awards Ceremony in New Orleans to honor the work of communication officials at the federal, state, and local level throughout our country. At the ceremony, the City of Greenville's Public Information Office earned second place in the category of printed material in the celebration of the calendar for the 2024 Then and Now City Calendar that spotlights our 250th anniversary. The calendar's theme was inspired by our 250th anniversary celebration this year and was designed by Aaron himself. One judge provided the following feedback. Listen to this. "Absolutely fantastic calendar, great blending of new and old photos with the historical blur to show the history of the town. Very well done." And let me just say, any of you that have not taken a look at this, it really is something special. I tell you, the pictures that are in here and the story it tells about our history as a city is absolutely remarkable, and that goes directly to the hard work that you do. This is just indicative of everything you do. This could not be a greater calendar if it was full of nothing but puppies. It is absolutely, it is absolutely the bomb. So Aaron, so thank you for everything that you do for the City of Greenville and for this outstanding award. Thank you. Now, I would like to ask the following individuals to come forward. Do we have Elijah Nobles, Tyreek Cogdale, Chloe Weeks, Tatiana Watson, and Destiny Jones? So each year, the city celebrates Juneteenth. And over the last few years, the level of celebration has continued to increase to recognize the holiday. And this year, we did something a little bit special with the West Greenville Health Council, sponsored a poster contest. And these are our winners here tonight. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to say each one first, one by one. First of all, honorable mention, Destiny Jones. Destiny had honorable mention. Tatiana Watson also had honorable mention. So now, third place, Chloe Weeks. Second place is my man Tyreek Cogdale. And first place is Elijah Nobles. I do not believe he was able to be here tonight, but his artwork will be displayed right there on the screen. That is our, that is our winning poster contest winner, Elijah Nobles, for his artwork for Juneteenth. And I'd just like to say, congratulations to each one of you for everything that you do, not only to be special people, but to be great students and to take your talent and to produce artwork that we can use around the city in celebration of Juneteenth. Your parents must be absolutely, awesomely proud of each one of you. So thank you.
And I'd just like to say, this is something that we plan to continue year after year, parents. Not only does it give the children an opportunity to display their talents, but also to learn more about Juneteenth and what it means. And for that, we thank the West Greenville Health Council and Councilmember Willis, who has spent her time working with the program as we prepare for our Juneteenth celebration.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. Congratulations, guys. We're always looking for opportunities to get kiddos like you guys involved in the things that we do in the city. Y'all answered the call, and so congratulations to you and very good job on your very hard work. Thank you.
You really? You just give us Ken? Where's Aaron?
On three. One, two, three. There you go.
Congratulations.
We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allot of 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allot of 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, sir. First speaker is Mr. Ferris Dixon. Mr. Dixon, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
How do you do? I'm Ferris Dixon, the Pitt County District Attorney. And this is actually a delegation. This is a part of the small, the large committee. It's a small part of it that's actually working on creating a veterans' court here. As you see, we have a wide variety of stakeholders. I would ask you to introduce yourself, Mr.?
Jim Hooker. Nice to be with you tonight.
And Mr. Hooker has been a driving force behind the creation of veterans' court?
Martin Forrest. I'm an Assistant District Attorney.
House Representative Forrest DeGrahan.
My name is Olson Torey. I work for the Independence Fund. We're a nonprofit company that works for veterans.
I do, would tell you, there's also Mr. Cherokee Most, who is living for pardon, couldn't get here in time. But we have the entire court system in support of this. Also, the local law enforcement, the sheriff, all in support of it. And what we're asking is, we're actually not asking for any money.
I like you guys.
We're request a grant. It's a $9,000 grant to create a veterans' court over a period of, dispersed over a period of four years. And we're now seeking letters of support, MOUs, asking for that you help us out with that, particularly with GPD giving us references for referring people to the court itself. Any more details you'd like?
Anybody need details?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you've already sent a letter, do you need to send another, just since we know?
If we sent one, then it's exactly. But we want to thank you for the letter you've already sent.
Thank you.
I don't think so. I'll send a letter.
But we will also get you, we'll get you an outline of what they look for in the grant itself. And we would have, hopefully have that grant completed by the end of the month or so.
Mr. Dixon, just for clarification, when you mentioned about referrals from GPD, for example, would that include when they come in contact with someone who may be a veteran, instead of following the normal adjudication process, they would funnel through the veteran court and have appropriate resources to be able to address their needs?
That is correct, Madam Counsel. But a referral could actually come from anywhere. It could come from a family member of someone who's in the court system, defense attorney, DA, or from the judge. We take referrals from all aspects of it, and then we, as a group, would meet in a committee and make a determination whether a person qualifies or not. The VA is also.
And how many is in the group total, you said?
Lord, it's, I've lost track of how big the email is. It's huge.
Okay.
Literally every major organization, whether VA-related, law enforcement-related, healthcare-related, Trillium is also on board. And so we try to encompass everything that would be needed as far as resource-wise.
I know this has been something that's you've been working on for a long time.
As I said, Mr. Hooker approached me several years ago at an event. I couldn't get to it at that time, but things were just laid in place, and I realized it's time to push on. And Mr. Hooker, if you'd like to say anything, is we leave?
No, we're just really grateful to get the support of the District Attorney. Judge Blount has agreed to be participant in the judge on the court cases. And it'd be a great bonus for the city and for the county because we have a great number of veterans in this city and county who are suffering from PTSD and TBI. And those injuries lead to aberrant behavior that is really inconsistent with their performance as a soldier or a Marine, typically, and can wind up and even leave them in court. And that's what, that's what the court system is all about. So veterans' court is really all about, is to deal with that situation.
I just wanted to say publicly, thank you to all of y'all for what you're doing. It's definitely a court that we need, as you point out. So many times, our veterans come back with PTSD, and it's, when you deal with them, it's not what the person, the character is. And we definitely need a virgin court system to deal with them and treat them with dignity and respect because they don't belong, most times, in the criminal court system. So thank all of y'all for what you're doing. It's a great need that we have. Thank you for spearheading it. And of course, MJ and Ferris, Representative Brown, you know, I love y'all for what you do and just appreciate what you do. And I want to publicly thank you. Continue on and march forward. I know you'll have our support.
I also wanted to let you know that Judge Foster was on the court, but he cannot be neither Judge Blount or Judge Foster to be here today. And that is it. And we will leave you alone. I can't believe I just came here and didn't ask for any money.
It's not too late. It's not too late.
I think it's 1212 West Fifth Street. I think they've got some extra money available earlier.
Wait a minute. We got to represent here. We got some Raleigh.
Yeah, we need to ask for money.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all so much for coming.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Next is Darcy Gill. Darcy, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening. My name is Darcy Gill, and I am a member of Down Home North Carolina here in Pitt County. And I'm here tonight to speak about the great bus system here in Greenville. At a previous city council meeting, I outlined our demands for the great bus system. We would like to see the bus fares remain free. We would like to see full bus hours on Saturday, like the rest of the week. We would like to see the City of Greenville make earnest efforts to look into IRA funds to improve the great bus system. I visited the bus station recently and talked with people who are currently riding the bus. Many of them were excited to hear about the expansion of hours. We all are excited about the expansion of hours, but found the thought of paying to ride the bus very concerning. Most of the people currently riding the bus are homeless and will not be able to afford bus fares if they are reinstated. Reinstating pre-COVID hours will make, will enable people working eight to five to ride the bus, but most of them are not going to be able to afford it. Bus fares are unaffordable if you are earning minimum wage. So what is the purpose of reinstating bus fares if the people who need to ride it the most cannot afford it? Does the City of Greenville really want to milk our poorest residents? Thank you for your time. And I also would like to invite you all to our chapter meeting on June 25. We will be meeting at the, we meet at the Unitarian Universalist Church off of South Charles, and we would love to work with you to make the City of Greenville better.
Thank you, Miss Gill.
What was the name of the organization?
Thank you.
Down Home North Carolina.
Thank you.
And what was the time of the meeting? It is at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Okay. Yes, sir. Got Ben L. Got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hello. My name is Ben, and I'm a member of Down Home, too. Keeping the buses free will make it easier for people to access buses. The cost of everything is going up and up, and folks on a fixed income from disabilities are tight-pressed to be able to get around otherwise. By keeping the buses free, the accessibility of the city would be far greater for people with disabilities and/or those with low income or fixed income. Many have, many people around here have no choice but to take the bus, and bringing back fares would make it, would hurt them a lot. I have autism, which makes it hard for me to drive and feel safe in driving consistently. I know it's a high-finding autism, but still, I know a lot more people who have even more challenges than me and are less fortunate than I am. It's hard for anyone to afford a car insurance and, and gas. Bringing back fares would make it harder for people like me to get around town. In the Triangle, which I've been there many times, they have kept the buses free, and it's a far larger and more expensive system. I know we can do the same here. Keeping fares free would be a great relief for our poorest, since every dollar counts these days. I would like to express that we need to expand our hours more than currently planned, especially on Saturdays. And people need to be able to get around, and just because it's the weekend does not mean we should not, does not mean we should have limited hours. Hours on the weekends should, week, should match the rest of the week. We have all the times when we needed to rely on someone else for a ride, whether we were kids, having car problems, or having health problems or financial problems. This can be frustrating, and a better bus system can solve this. I also wanted to say that Down Home is hosting our next chapter meeting on June 25 at the local Unitarian Church off of Charles, South Charles, Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a great job. Good job. Our next speaker?
Okay. Next speaker is Dr. Yoshi Newman. Dr. Newman?
Hello, council members, city manager. It's always very nice to be able to come and speak with you, and I wanted to reiterate the requests that have been made about the bus system. Down Home North Carolina is an organization that is the voice for the working people, working families, their voice and advocacy for the needs of our community. And the local chapter is a branch of that, of the state organization. So as has been mentioned, it's critical to, for people who don't have transportation to get to their, to their work, to home, to where they worship, to wherever they need to be. And if you think for a moment about minimum wage in North Carolina, a shocking $7.25 an hour. Think about working one, two, three jobs at $7.25 an hour. And out of that, paying transportation for the bus. It seems like a small fee, but it's not a small fee if you make $7.25 an hour, or 10, or 12. So please consider the free bus fare, or even a quarter, a dime, something. But the changes that are going to be made with restoring hours and Saturday service, those are great changes, much, much appreciated. So thank you so much for your work on that.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ciara Isaacs. Ciara, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hello. I'm Ciara, and I'm a member of Down Home NC. We are very excited for the expanded bus hours. And we're going to be able to go out and do things far away from campus on the weekends, too, which is exciting. However, we would love to have the fares continue being free as they were before. And I, I have an anecdote. I like, I like my little anecdotes. I have a friend who is an amazing person, and she I have a friend who is an amazing person, and she recently, this past fall, finished her associate's degree at Pitt County Community College. She took the bus there every single morning and back for free, calculating, you know, the nine-week semester, you know, two times a day, five days a week. That would have come out to like $787 in total, which is a lot of money when you are a broke college student. So yeah, I feel like we will continue to have success stories like that if we continue having our buses free. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ciara.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Diane Bell. You have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a member of Down Home from North Carolina. When I first came to Greenville, I came to take care of my grandmother, but not only that, I was read here in Greenville off and on with my grandmother. I never did ask about the transportation system because my grandmother always taught me to ride the city cab. I moved here in August, August 14th, 1994, to take care of my grandmother, but she passed away. And I still didn't know nothing about the transportation system, no more other than the city cab. I lived in Winterville for 16 years, and I had walked from Winterville to Greenville because of no transportation, no bus system. I didn't mind because it was for business and to see family members. I would like to see that the buses be extended so that people can have transportation that do not have transportation. When I moved down here, no one told me to bring my own transportation because there was no bus services where I was living at. I would like to see that the bus hours be extended and that there be more buses put on the road, so to have a better system than just every hour. There's working people out here that's providing for their families, that's working on the property. They're paying for Uber and cabs, like, what, $20 to get to work if you're working at Burger King's? They're paying $20 for Uber just to get to work, and then there's another $20 just to get home. And I think the bus system should be extended to more hours and more bus services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Kat Dale. Got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hello, council members, mayor, city manager. So my name's Kat Dale. I am your vice chair of your Multimodal Transportation Commission. So it's really exciting to hear people talk about the bus. And I will also throw in my two cents that I think the fares should remain free and we should extend hours. I know that there are some struggles with hiring drivers and funding, funding for that, so, but I would also like to support that notion. I am up here also tonight to talk to you about resurfacing. So I'm really appreciative that the city is allocating resources to repairing our streets, resurfacing roads, especially our town-maintained streets, right? We know that most of our streets are actually state-owned, state-maintained, but on our town streets, we're, we're really doing good work to make those better. Resurfacing is such a key moment to add safety features, like crosswalks, center lines, adding parking spots that visually narrow roadways. So I would really like to see the staff maybe examine where we can be adding additional safety features during this resurfacing process. So often, we resurface a road and we just put the paint back right where it was before. But this is a pivotal point where we can be adding those crosswalks, restriping, all those sorts of things. I know that we had a lot of resurfacing done on my street last year, on Fourth Street, and there were no, there was nothing added, and people totally, they blast through there. So it's, it's signed at, I think, 35, but, or maybe even lower. But people tend to go really fast because there's no center line, there's no parking spots, there's no bike lanes. It's just a really wide boulevard. So I think that that's kind of thing we could avoid while this summer and this fall as we do some of those resurfacing projects. So just something to consider and maybe think about allocating some staff time, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Kiota Blakeney. Blakeney, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hi, my name is, excuse me, Kiota Blakeney. I moved here about two years ago with my 15-year-old and my 21-year-old. My main concern with moving back to Greenville from up north was the lack of transportation and opportunities for my son. He has epilepsy, so even though the doctor said he can drive with medication, we're not ready for that yet because accidents happen. It's not a foolproof plan, excuse me. So I would like to find more transportation for him. We live not too far from the Alice King Center, and his first job, he was on Memorial Drive, making less than $10 an hour. And even though I worked from home, I would have to tell my manager, I need 20 minutes to take my son to work. Otherwise, he would pay $12 to $15 on a lift to get back and forth, which is more money than he was making, but I still need him to be gainfully employed. His second job, he made more money. He made $15 an hour, but he was on Sugg Parkway. I don't know if anybody knows where that is besides me. And that's the focus, focused services. It has Optimum and the other phone company, Spectrum. Even though he's making $15 an hour, from where we lived, near Alice King Center, he was paying almost $18 to $20 an hour. I mean, I'm sorry, to go back and forth. Sometimes I would be able to drive him from our home to the McDonald's on Greenville Boulevard, and he would still have to pay $12 to get to his job there. So if we had more bus routes, because I called the bus, bus companies, I called disability, I called everyone, and there was just no transportation for him. So if we could just get more transportation and more bus routes, I think this would be a better city for people who are coming from out of state, and we can appreciate it more being here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay, I think that concludes our speakers.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Powers. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to, I'm here to say a public thank you to all the members of the council. You're very much appreciated. I speak for myself and many others that you're doing a terrific job, and we really appreciate all the work that you do. I'm also here to refresh your memory about a nonprofit organization I work with called Relief. Relief is staffed pretty much by volunteers, that's how you spell it, R-E and then L-E-A-F, get it? Relief. But it's also relief, both in terms of relieving the trees of Greenville by planting more trees, but also providing relief that is part of having a tree canopy. Our mission is to keep Greenville green. And when there's all the, there's a lot of talk about the importance of sustainability and moving our city forward in terms of not only beautification and attraction to businesses and new people, but making it sustainable. And so I wanted to let you know a little bit more about Relief, that we work in cooperation with y'all. We, the volunteers, raise the money to buy the trees, we plant the trees, and you all help us dig the holes. So there's a cooperation there that is just so important, and we have been working with you for 30-some years. But it shows just a piece of what's going on and has been going on in Greenville to try to make Greenville green and keep it that way. And so I wanted to share that with you as you move forward in your decision-making, to remember that the community's out here, working in our own way to be as supportive of Greenville being green as we can. Thank you. Thought I had one more thing to say, but, oh, I'm also for free bus fares. Thanks.
Thanks, Rebecca.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You've got three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, item number four, authorization to receive funds from the U.S. Department of Justice Body-Worn Camera Grant. Item number five, authorization to apply for a Great Trails State Grant to help fund the Boardwalk Connection from Wildwood Park to River Park North. Item number six, ordinance and reimbursement resolution amending Greenville Utility Commission's fiscal year 2023-24 budget and various capital project budgets. Item number seven, contract with the Ferguson Group for fiscal year 2024/2025. Item number eight, Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge fiscal year 2024-25 contract for services. Item number nine, contract award for the 2024 Stormwater Repairs Project and approval of task order number six for construction engineering and inspection, CEI, and construction materials testing, CMT, on-call contract. And item number 10, various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. No.
Yes.
No.
I've got a streak.
I got a must-dip. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Wait, wait, wait.
Just kidding. I'm just kidding. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd just like to pull item number five for a couple of questions.
Motion to approve items four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Coast on to number five.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Item number five, authorization to apply for a Great Trails State Grant to help fund the Boardwalk Connection from Wildwood Park to River Park North. Call forward Projects and Development Manager Mark Nottingham to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mark, thanks so much for answering just a couple of questions. How much is the grant for?
So there's $25 million statewide. Cities can apply for up to $500,000.
That's fantastic. And can you tell me when we'll hear about this?
Sure. So they don't have an exact date yet. Here's kind of a timeline of the application period. Awards will be announced early 2025.
Are these, is this sort of where they'll give out money until it runs out, kind of?
So it was going to be a two-year grant cycle where they provided 12.5 in each of the next two years. Decided to group it all together for a bigger impact across the state. So it's, you know, just one year, non-recurring.
I love that. And then, so I guess we'd find out in early next year. And is this going to be shovel-ready?
So it's been designed and permitted. It's shovel-ready. We can go.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much for providing this additional information. That's so exciting to get these parks connected. And I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Now, Mark and Don are going to go back to their seats right now, and they're going to fill out the, the application and send it in right now.
I'm sure it won't take any more work than that.
We don't want, we don't want any other cities beating us.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. So we will move on to new business, which are public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes, each with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance, to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Mr. Manager, our first and only public hearing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing, item number 11, public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 City of Greenville budgets, including Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt-Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Greenville Utilities Commission, and a public hearing to be held concurrently on proposed stormwater management utility rate increase. I'll now call forward the Chief Financial Officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
I feel like we're really heavy-loaded with the city staff here, and I feel like there's a lot of skin in the game. I feel like we've got a lot of city staff over here tonight.
So they're all, they're all here to support, uh, support me tonight for the budget, I'm sure.
That's right. That's right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have a public hearing on the fiscal year 24-25 proposed budget. The proposed budget for 24-25 is $483 million, which encompasses all city operating funds, the Greenville Utility Commission, the Convention and Visitors Authority, as well as Shepherd Memorial Library. The city's budget is $175.9 million. The majority of that is in the general fund, which is the main city operating fund, which comprises 64% of the operating dollars proposed at $112.8 million. The 24-25 proposed budget is a strong reflection of the city's mission, which is to provide all citizens with high-quality services in an open, inclusive, professional manner and sharing a community of excellence now and in the future. The 24-25 budget highlights, we will be, we're asking to reduce the property tax to 39.54 cents from 48.95 cents. We appropriate 85% of all general fund revenues into core public service areas, invest over 65% of the general fund into the City of Greenville employees, provide for an average 4% wage increase for employees, and adjust the city's pay plan structure by 2.6%. The city will provide for a 401K employer contribution of 3% per pay period, and provides for the creation of a community engagement coordinator. Will provide for $3 million in annual funding for the pavement management program and $4.25 million in pay-as-you-go funding for capital projects. It continues the stormwater utility plan approved by council in April 2019. It provides for $250,000 in funding for pedestrian safety projects. It provides $80,000 in funding to support the housing needs for individuals recovering from substance abuse. Provides $700,000 in public safety pay adjustments. Provides for six new fire and EMS employees, and provides for an additional fire marshal position. Provides $400,000 in new ADA funding, and provides for $100,000 in new funding for sidewalk expansions. Provides $375,000 in local funding to support the CDBG housing program, $40,000 in funding for wrecking parts, community outreach, provides $500,000 for citywide economic development partnership, $200,000 in funding for existing and future job creation, provides $20,000 in funding of the city's facade and grant improvement program, provides $20,000 in funding for skills training, $115,000 in total funding for the downtown Greenville Partnership and Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, and expands the hours of operations of the transit system, provides for the addition of a full-time sustainability coordinator position, $600,000 in funding to enhance beautification of the city, provides for the completion of the city's new gateway sign, includes $100,000 in funding for the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge, converts two part-time positions to full-time to support special events and arts programming, and provides funding and support for over 50 community events, and provides for coordinating a community task force to explore the potential for a future sports complex in the Greenville-Pitt County area. The proposed 24-25 general fund revenues, 86 out of every $100 comes from our main revenue sources, which include property tax, sales tax, the GUC transfer, utility franchise tax, our rescue billing, and Powell bill. Total revenue budget is proposed at $112.8 million. Our property tax base grew 40.69% through the revaluation at Pitt County. That includes normal growth of 2.75% and revaluation growth of 37.94%. The proposed rate is at 39.54%, which will be the lowest tax rate in Greenville's history, recent history. The current tax rate at 40.95, 48.95%, with a revenue-neutral rate of 36.85%, which is a 12.10 cents different from current to revenue-neutral. And the city is proposing a tax rate of 39.54 cents, which is 2.69 cents above the revenue-neutral rate. The revenue from the revalue, from the proposed tax rate will be $2.965 million to fund city priorities through revaluation. Which will bring the 2024-25 proposed revenue for property tax to 43. property tax to $43.7 million. Originally proposed in May 2024 was a 2.42 cent retained from, through revaluation. The adjustments from that meeting include a sustainability coordinator at $95,000 and additional money towards public safety pay adjustments of $200,000, which leads to our adjusted proposed rate of 2.69 cents retained through revaluation for $2.97 million additional dollars. These are the priorities that are funded through revaluation. Key highlights include seven fire rescue positions, public safety pay adjustments at $700,000, the ability to pay for fleet maintenance operations for city vehicles at $370,000, additional operating money for public works and recreation and parks, as well as ADA sidewalks and additional money for payments as well. Also includes the sustainability coordinator position that was requested at the May meeting. The overall expense budget is $112.8 million, the majority of which is personnel at 63% of the overall budget. Our personnel budget for 24-25 is proposed at $74.2 million, majority of which goes towards wages with about 33% towards benefits. The majority of our budget is spent on our core operating areas. That includes police, our engineering and public works, recreation parks, and fire rescue departments. And the total operating budget for the city general fund, it will be $26.3 million. We are proposing $14.2 million in transfers, majority of which will go towards the debt service fund for current and future debt payments for 24-25, 1.2 million to our facilities improvement fund, 3.5 million to engineering capital project fund, 1.5 million to Shepherd Memorial, 375,000 to our CDBG and housing fund, $775,000 towards our transit fund, and $80,000 to a special revenue fund. Our total operating budget for other funds totaled $63.1 million. The main fund for those is our stormwater fund, which includes a $1 rate increase as part of our stormwater plan, our debt service fund at $7.3 million, proposed $5 million budget for transit, which includes expanded operating hours and the reintroduction of passenger fares, sanitation at $9.5 million, which includes no rate increase for sanitation, and $14.3 million for our health insurance fund. In summary, we have a $483.5 million budget across the entire city. Revaluation, we're asking, proposing to retain 2.69 cents, uh, cents above the revenue-neutral rate for a 39.54 cent proposed rate, which will fund $2.97 million worth of priorities through revaluation. And tonight we'll have the public hearing, and adoption of the proposed budget is scheduled for Thursday night's meeting. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? Mayor Pro Tem Daniels?
Where does the disparity study fall in this?
That will be funded through money that we have set aside for one-time projects for next year, as it's not an ongoing capital item, but we do have money set aside for that.
So Mayor Pro Tem, there are, we are waiting to get through the end of the fiscal year to determine what our, our position is, and based off of what that position looks like, we have a, like we always do, we have a list of one-time needs that have been identified that council has asked us to make a priority, and that is identified as one of those priorities that council has asked us to take a look at. So I would foresee that in August we would be able to, to look at what those are and bring something back.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you have a question?
Councilmember Wells?
So, two questions. How would not having bus fares affect the current budget that's been presented? I know you mentioned that with the bus fares and whatnot just a second ago.
So I'll ask Director of Public Works Kevin Molin to come forward to, to address that.
And I'll add to that, to be specific, what is the projected income that will be generated?
From the fares? Or do we have that number?
Good afternoon, I, I don't know if that question, if your question was about transit, I didn't hear that.
It might be off. It's on now.
It's on. What would the projected income be for, that we would generate from bus fares? To add to Portia's question.
So we presented back a few months ago at a workshop in council that the $1.25 would bring in about $300,000 in revenue. We are increasing our projected to increase hours by 54%. That's an increase in operating of about a million dollars. So that million dollars, FTA is going to cover 50% of it, so $500,000 of increase. We're able to locate $200,000 in the budget, but we, without that fare increase, we'll be operating in a deficit. So we would love to operate fare-free. We've been operating fare-free since COVID with the inception of the CARES Fund, the CARES Funds, CARES Act funding. Those funds have, we've, we're finished with those funds, right? So we no longer have those funds to rely on. Again, we are increasing hours from 50 to 77. We are increasing our budget by a million dollars. There was a question about increasing, so let me just go over what we're doing. Our current weekday hours are 7:25 to 5:15. We are going from 7:25 AM to 5:15 PM. We're increasing to 6 AM to 8 PM. So that is not going back to pre-pandemic, that is actually our longest hours that we've ever had in great service. We are also reintroducing Saturday hours. We do not operate on Saturday right now, and we are increased, we are, we'll be operating on Saturday from 9 AM to 4 PM. There was a request to increase that to eight, to, from 4 PM to 8 PM. That would bring the total from 77 hours to 81 hours. That will increase, we'd be, we'd be operating, we'd be building in overtime for our drivers with those four hours, so we'd be increasing our, our expenses by another $225,000. So we'd have to look at the fares, unless, you know, there, there's revenue coming from somewhere else, and we have not identified where that other place would be. So that's, that's why we've instituted fares. Now, there was a comment about, I think about Triangle, about Raleigh, they are reinstituting fares as, as of July 1st, or at least that's their plan. So we are one of the last cities to, to return to fares from the pre-pandemic. At the workshop, we had shown Greensboro, Wilmington, Fayetteville, Jacksonville, Asheville, Raleigh, they all had, were fare-free, as well as the city, and they've all returned or will return to fares ranging from $1.25 to, to $2.
So could we maintain what we are providing currently, providing free fares? Could we maintain the schedule that we have currently, or are we operating in a deficit?
So I think, so as the CARES funds go away, I think we, if we wanted to just continue to run at 7:25 to 5 o'clock, Monday through Friday, we could do that with our current budget and with FTA's current contributions. We would not be able to extend hours. The reason for bringing back the fare is so that we could improve services on our system.
So certainly not improve the hours for?
It, it is a 50% increase.
Gotcha. Okay. And then my next question was the, the community engagement coordinator, what services are they able to offer that we're not able to offer now by adding them?
So that, that position will make a concerted effort to actually get out into the community and spread our message. Right now, we really don't have that person to be the conduit with the community directly. That person's job will be able to go ahead and meet with the civic organizations, the community organizations, get into the community and actually put out the message that, of what we're doing.
What, what message is that exactly?
It's with the different types of programs that we're, that we're offering of how that, any changes to programs that we're making within our home division, our CDBG division, how that will impact the community, how, and to gain information back from the community of changes to those programs that would allow us to run more efficiently.
And what we're going to pay for that?
It's, I think we budgeted in there $95,000.
Does that include benefits?
That includes benefits, exactly.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Wanted to, Kevin, sorry to call you back up, wanted to kind of tag along with council members Foreman and Willis. When we're looking at the fare to ride the bus, I was really moved by the description of people who are homeless, and this is their only way to get around, and if they're homeless, they may or may not have employment. Is there any way that we can, and again, not to, I don't know how it would work, but could we have any kind of a sliding scale or a pass system where some people would be eligible for passes and not pay a fare?
We did have that, FTA does allow that for, for veterans or for seniors. I will say, in the past, when we had, when we were fare-based system, Community Crossroads paid us on a monthly basis, they were probably our largest customer. So they paid for the fares for the homeless population.
Would that be able to resume once we institute affairs again?
We'd have to speak with them on that and give them a heads-up on this, or continue to give them a heads-up on this.
As you say that, I, I have to give some feedback, because there is a significant subset of the homeless population that do not go to Community Crossroads, so that doesn't cover all of the homeless in the community.
And even those working would have a difficult time.
Yes. I guess just then to sum up, which very good observations, if, if there was a possibility to ma, to maintain these expanded hours, which I think are wonderful and needed, and have a, a way to have a pass system for folks who have special needs, that's just something that I think would, would be really good for our community and to make, to make, make it more accessible.
FTA allows a reduced fare. We would not, this, this is FTA's rules, we'd not be able to charge one sector of the population $1.25 and another sector free. All right, so we can have a reduced fare, but, but up to 50%. So those are FTA's rules.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seen none? Public hearing is now open, those speak on behalf of the applicant. May come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Hey. So, good evening, Mayor Connolly, and council members, I'm going to speak in favor of the budget. I'm Jeff McKinnon, I've met some of you before and spoken to you. I've lived here in Greenville for 16 years, raised two children here, and I've recently had the honor of volunteering on the Environmental Advisory Commission, the EAC, making some practical use of my training in biology. A few weeks ago, owing to my role as EAC Chair, I attended the presentation of our next budget, and I was greatly impressed at both the content and, and the process that evening. I watched a superb presentation, I hope he doesn't blush, by city manager Mr. Michael Cowan and his colleagues on the city staff, I've seen more of that tonight. I also saw some modest but valuable revisions requested with strong support from across the council. Overall, this budget struck me as carefully considered, as thoughtful, and as intentional. It carefully balances the burden on taxpayers who, while planning for adequate spending to advance our city and make sure its needs are funded. These include infrastructure, police and fire, public programs that the community depends upon, and services to support small businesses and economic recruiting and development. The principal revision that I observed being made to the budget was to increase funding for police salaries by an additional $200,000, largely to ensure that positions are filled. I learned from council members' comments that some positions have been unfilled for extended periods, even as the council members have heard frequent reports from their constituents of an increase in dangerous driving. Apparently maintaining adequate traffic enforcement has been difficult with positions open. As someone who experiences Greenville's roads as a driver, as a pedestrian, and every day as a cyclist, I was heartened to see the support for funding, while hopefully improving, which will hopefully improve traffic enforcement. Our police officers are exemplary, we need to make sure we have the best caliber officers as we do today, and that our positions are filled. In addition, I saw a strong support for funding a sustainability manager position or coordinator at $95,000, which would include recruitment costs and benefits, as well as salary. This position has been a high priority for the commission I chair for two years, and we are heartened to see the support for this position. Greenville faces threats to our quality of life, to our economic competitiveness, to our extraordinary natural resources, from local, regional, and global environmental difficulties and problems. At the same time, we have the opportunity to realize substantial savings through wise decisions about use of energy and other resources, and to win large grants. Indeed, our lead for NC fellow, Abby Kimmel, has likely already covered her salary through an NCDQ, Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. ECU Sustainability Manager or Coordinator Chad Carwin has helped ECU achieve millions of dollars in energy savings through efficiencies. Building on Kimmel and Carwin's successes, a sustainability coordinator can play a critical role in helping us address serious threats and realize tremendous opportunities, which is why such positions are becoming common in cities like ours, and why we should strive to keep up. The position can be expected to, expected to more than pay for itself quickly. Moreover, our recent success recruiting Beauviet to Greenville, a solar panel manufacturer and one of the largest employers ever to come to our town, speaks to the importance of participating in the green economy. For the prosperity of our city, it is increasingly important that we invest towards positions ourselves, position ourselves to recruit such employers. It is to the credit of our staff and council that in this carefully planned budget, our tax rate remains exceptionally low relative to peers and to our own record, and only marginally different from, modestly different, I should say, from revenue-neutral. So in conclusion, I urge the council to adopt this thoughtfully developed and revised budget in its entirety. It will cost-effectively enhance our quality of life, better steward our natural assets, and strengthen our ability to recruit new employers and the very best people. Thanks so much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the applicant? May come forward, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Shaw, and I would like to also support the Hiram Sustainability Manager and the budget proposal. I'm a pulmonary physician, and I'd like to begin with a brief quote from the New England Journal of Medicine. "The greatest threat to global public health is the continued failure of world leaders to keep global temperature rise below 1.5 degrees centigrade and to restore nature." We all agree that climate change is a global problem, so what can a, a city like Greenville do that would be effective? I would like to stress that a sustainability manager for the city of Greenville will be part of the Southeast Sustainability Managers Network. There are 27 communities in North Carolina that are part of this network. These people network, and perhaps the greatest value of this network is to apply for grants and to successfully receive grants. As a brief examples, the Inflation Reduction Act provided $2 billion to help community-based organizations tackle environmental justice conditions. There was $4 billion for the EPA to help communities reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I maintain that a sustainability manager through networking with the Southeast Sustainability Network would be able to apply for these grants, and as Dr. McKinnon stated, potentially pay for the person's salary. There are many examples of sustainability managers in other cities, which I won't go into, but they've saved these communities millions of dollars in purchase electricity costs and other, and, energy costs. So in summary, a sustainability- costs. So, in summary, a sustainability manager for the city of Greenville will be part of a network of other sustainability managers from the state of North Carolina. And through that network, they will help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, work toward environmental justice, obtain grants, and save energy costs. And I'd also like to point out that this is funding for a one-year position.
That's time.
So, after one year, it could be reevaluated. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Karen Zip, and I'm also on the Environmental Advisory Commission. I would like to let you all know that I very much support this budget. I want to commend your valiant efforts to try to keep our property taxes low, in light of the high evaluations of property, real estate that is these days. So, I really appreciate that. I also might suggest that as far as the bus system is concerned, that it's very possible, especially for student fares, that there may be some opportunity for that community engagement coordinator to go to East Carolina University and to pick community college, and see if there might be some kind of arrangement made that would allow for student fares to be reduced or even free, based upon those students' matriculation into those educational institutions. So, that might be an opportunity that I don't know if that's something that we could think about. But I'd also like to really commend you all for including a sustainability coordinator in this budget. And, you know, you've heard a good bit about how great Abby Kimmel has done, and how she has even been able to secure a grant that might be able to help support her salary. You've also heard and seen how she has made a lot of effort to try to get, give us a better idea of how we can actually save money in the light of looking at a climate that is changing rapidly. And I just want to say that I've had the opportunity recently with Dr. McKinnon to take a workshop that is held by Chad Carwin in introducing sustainability into the curriculum. And what that opportunity did was it showed me that not only can I build some of the issues about sustainability, which is really about saving money in this environment, but I got to understand a whole lot more about the resources that ECU has, how Chad Carwin has inventoried all of those projects across the university, and given us an idea of all of the areas where we might be able to teach our students how to become more sustainable. I can see our commission getting more of an opportunity from a sustainability coordinator in terms of education. I can see the council. I can see all of the other commissions getting an opportunity to take a workshop and get, become educated by a sustainability coordinator in how to operate more efficiently, more economically, especially as our climate is changing and creating greater challenges for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, Yoshi Newman. I am also a member of the Environmental Advisory Commission, and I've been here previously, speaking on behalf of a sustainability manager for the city. So, good cases have been made for all of the economic reasons why this is beneficial for the city. And I just want to propose that that's very important. And in budgeting, of course, that's a primary concern. There are things that can be monetized, and there are really, really important things that cannot be monetized. We can't monetize relationships with each other. We can't monetize our relationship with our community. We can't monetize the health of our environment. But that's really what we're talking about, is we're trying to monetize something that is intangible. We have so much to gain with a sustainability manager position, and we have so much to lose. Dr. McKinnon and I have spoken before on a couple of occasions about this area being a biodiversity hotspot. That means we have critical species that live here. We're part of a southeastern region that is one of 32 or 36 all over the globe. I see this position as critical to the Unified Development Ordinance. Every decision, every bit of development that takes place in this city should have someone at the table whose expertise is sustainability, whose expertise is how do we move our community forward in the ways that have been identified as most beneficial, not just for people, but for all life that we share here in our area and in our community. The other compelling thing I think about very often is, there will come a time when children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren ask us what things used to be like, when they read in books about the environment, and plants, and animals, and ecosystems, and what things used to be like, and why they're gone, and say, "What did you do?" They ask us, "What did you do?" You sit in such an important position, because you have the power to make a decision that you can say, "This is what I did." I voted for a sustainability manager in our city that started to create a cascade of mindset, actions, and activities in our community that made a difference for all of us. That would be a really fabulous thing to say. So, we could all take pride in that. We have a sustainability manager in Greenville. I ask you, please consider that. Let's work toward that together. We can do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Yoshi.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Dr. Catherine Davis, and I was really thrilled to see the budget as well. I think there's a lot of really great things in it. The four things that I'm just really excited about are pedestrian safety improvements, which is probably not surprising, given my earlier comments. The sidewalk fund, I think that this may be the first time we've ever dedicated money specifically for sidewalk expansion. So, I hear a lot, as the vice-chair of the MTC, I hear a lot from our residents about wanting more sidewalks, particularly in our areas that really should be walkable, like our grid neighborhood, right? We have a lot of college students who are walking to class, and a lot of those streets don't have sidewalks, or they're discontinuous, right? We have a half a block that doesn't have a sidewalk for some reason. So, I'm really, really excited about the $100,000 that are in there for additional sidewalk expansions, and the ADA improvements as well. We are about 40 to 50 years behind on fixing some of our ADA non-compliance issues. So, I'm really excited about that, and I hope that money stays in there and that we can grow that pot of money in the future. I'm also really excited with the sustainability coordinator, so that also fits in really a lot with our transportation. We think a lot about how transportation is so important in Greenville. We've heard all night about different transportation issues, right? So, sustainability coordinator will be interfacing a lot with our different ways to get around, and thinking about how to get people out of cars, and using active mobility instead. And then I also want to make a case for the community engagement coordinator that I think is in there. We've heard a few comments about. So, dealing with transportation stuff, I see that there's a lot of miscommunication between some of our major capital projects and the communities that those are happening in. So, like, half of Greenville feels like it's under construction currently. And I talk to people who are very confused about what these projects are, when they're going to be finished. We all think it's obvious, right? Like, I know where to go to find that information, but community members often don't. And I see these Facebook comments and talk to community members who are like, "What is the built brand?" And they live right on Fifth Street. And it's like, no one talked to you about this major project that will improve your community with sidewalks, and bike lanes, and a roundabout, and a place where we should have had one. So, I'm always surprised when it feels like community members just, they don't have the engagement with the city. So, I want to make a case for that position. I think it's a really important one, and I think that they can really make a difference in people feeling like their government and their city staff are really there, working for them, and not against them. So, I want to make a case for that position as well. So, thank you so much. But I really do think it's a great budget. So, good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Maury York, and I'm not a member of the Environmental Advisory Commission, although I did serve with Inez Fridley in the early 1980s. I'd like to thank the city manager and our department heads for crafting such a sensible budget that achieves a lot of positive changes for the community without raising taxes significantly. And I wanted to especially thank you all for including the sustainability coordinator in the budget, and I hope that it will pass with that intact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. York.
Thanks, Maury.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, see none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Well, I don't want to be the first person, and I don't have 10 minutes, but I'm David Edwards. I'm the HOA president at University Condominiums on Golden Road. I got here in 1987, graduated from ECU in '92, opened a small business and stayed. We've been open to the public for 32 years in the same location. Excuse me if I'm a little nervous. Seeing those kind of numbers just makes me a little queasy, so I'm going to just read a speech that I wrote. "Our property values at University Condominiums more than doubled from this last evaluation. So, I went down to the tax office to appeal my valuations in person, like I always do, and on two separate occasions, appraisers were conveniently unavailable that day. In addition, I personally witnessed tax assessor office employees telling taxpayers, 'We just determined the values. The city council determines the tax rates.' Meanwhile, city leaders were quick to call for a revenue-neutral budget to pacify outraged property tax, property owners blindsided by these historic valuation increases. I especially liked the budget graphs. They were beautiful. The one that showed that the tax rate was the lowest that we'd ever seen. I would have liked to have seen an accompanying graph that showed, was this the highest reevaluation that we'd ever seen? But we didn't have that graph." Now, normally, I'm not a conspiracy person, but we have an awfully suspicious timeline here. First, these historic revaluations come out. Next, the tax assessor employees kick the ball squarely in the city council's court, and appraisers are surprisingly unavailable. Then, city officials publicly tout a revenue-neutral budget support to pacify outraged taxpayers. Finally, we are here tonight, and we have a budget that is not revenue-neutral, resulting in huge tax bill increases for property owners. But now, the tax assessor says, "Oh, we're sorry. It's too late to file any sort of appeal on your bill." If the members of this city council don't see how this chain of events was intentionally orchestrated to generate more revenue, then I'd like to invite you all to a timeshare presentation after this meeting. We all understand that Greenville is growing, and with that growth comes increased expenses, but this tax assessor gone wild mentality has to stop. The disconnect and accountability between the tax assessor's office and city officials has to stop. I appreciate the financial transparency of this council, but the smoke-and-mirrors process between tax evaluations and then determining tax rates is deceptive and misleading. If the people had known what their taxes were going to be when these valuations came out, I believe there would have been a riot at the tax assessor's office that day. At the current proposed budget, my property taxes will increase by more than 60%. I don't know about everybody else, but those taxes won't be revenue-neutral for my household. I implore this council to implement a revenue-neutral budget for this year to soften the blow dealt by our overzealous tax assessor's office, and implement additional appeal remedies for property owners disproportionately affected that are now being stonewalled by the same tax assessor's office. I would like to personally thank city councilmember Marion Blackburn for taking the time to have a lengthy discussion with me about the budget, and for being the only councilmember that publishes their phone number on the website. I would also like to thank the city manager for having someone to call me back promptly, and for Matt Scully for returning my call as well. Thank you all for the difficult job that you do, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. If you're in opposition to the budget, it is.
Yes, if I was a sustainability position?
Are you in favor of it or against it?
In favor.
Then you may not want to speak right now. Yeah, we passed that. You had quite a bit of support, though. Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. I guess, do we have any discussion prior to moving to the next item? Councilmember Blackburn?
Do we make, is tonight when we actually?
Tonight is just the hearing, public hearing.
Thursday night would be the actual.
Okay. Then, just by way of conversation, I just want to thank everyone who came out and spoke tonight, and your eloquence, and the respect that you've had for the difficulty of the process. Mr. Edwards, really have heard you and appreciate your coming tonight, and everyone's thoughtful approach to this. We have, I would like to commend our city manager for providing us with a visionary budget, and appreciate everyone for taking the time to comment. That's it.
All right, any other comments?
I do want to offer one comment. Last summer, I called out that there was probably going to be a 30% to 40% increase on our property taxes. I regret our city didn't let our citizens know that was coming. Where did my epiphany come from? It came from inflation. Why are our property values higher? Because to build a house, it's more expensive. Look at plywood, look at lumber, look at everything. It's very disheartening. But that's why our property values have gone up at a rate that I've never seen, and I've lived here my entire life for 63 years. But that's coming from the inflation. It's not coming from what the city has done, or what the county has done. It's just inflation. Look at the price of plywood, what they, what they charge for it now compared to what it used to be four years ago. The price of bricks, the price of framing, the price of concrete, the price of shingles and drywalls, the price of food, the price of gas. We can go on and on and on. That's why our property values have gone up. And I want to know, I want to be clear, the city of Greenville does not assign the value for property taxes. It is the county that does that, which they can do it every eight years, or every four years. They've chosen four years. And so, they went out and they evaluated our properties based upon current values. And it is outrageous, as you indicate, sir. I mean, on the one hand, you can say it's good, because your property just went up 60% in value, but at the same time, your taxes went up, which takes it away, which is why they want to be, why a lot of people want to be revenue-neutral. But I get exactly what you're saying, because I know people who are in the rental property business, and I know if they have that type of increase in their property values, I know what they're going to do to the rents. See, everybody shares the burden. And so, I truly understand what you're saying. I wish that we had done a better job of getting out to say it's coming, but it's something that it was just coming because of inflation. I do want to point out that on your tax bill, it gave you a very detailed way to challenge it, and look at the comps that they were using. You could also go to Zillow, and then if you lost that round, you could go to the second round to contest it if you chose to do so. But if you bypass those deadlines, then you've lost that battle. It is regrettable, but again, I just want to know where I think it comes from. And again, it's, on the one hand, it's great if you own property, because you've got an instant equity increase. But on the same thing, what you're talking about is, most people in the rental property business, it's the way of earning a living, and they're budgeting just like everybody else. So, when they have that substantial increase in the tax bill, I understand exactly what you're saying, sir. And I will tell you, I think I'm the only one up- saying, sir. And I will tell you, I think I'm the only one up here that's ever sent my cellphone number publicly, and I'll say it again, (252) 916-1729. I will talk to anybody about any issue that comes across your mind, whether it's in the city, in my district, or outside. I'm always willing to sit and talk, and if it involves wanting to look at something, I'll put boots on the ground and go walk with you. I promise you that. I'll make that promise to you publicly. So that's my cellphone number. I regret that we are in this position. It's affecting all of us, and I'm glad we went down. I would like to see revenue-neutral, but we've got things that need our attention, and one of which is law enforcement. We've been 25 officers down for over two years. We cannot continue to do that, so we've got to add more money to get those officers here, and that's something that takes money, unfortunately. It takes money. We've got to have fire, rescue, and everything like that. So it's not my point to lecture anybody in this room or those who are watching on TV, but more or less to provide an explanation. Some of my frustration because I, too, as a property owner, my taxes have gone up, and my property values have gone up. And so I regret it, but it's just part of the economy we're living under right now and have been for the last three or four years. So I do appreciate everybody's comment. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. Anyone else got comments? I mean, I will say, I personally think that we should do revenue-neutral. We had comments earlier today talking about bus fares, and unfortunately, a lot of those tax revaluations are going to be passed along to the people that are probably most vulnerable, and those are some of the tenants that will be living in our community. And seeing increased prices for rental rates is going to hit them hard. Inflation's been very, very difficult over the last several years, but those that are earning a minimum wage right now are going to get hurt the most. So it's not just those people that own large homes or just regular-sized homes in our community that are going to get hurt. That's going to get passed on to those people that are paying rent also. In addition to that, you've got people that are paying increased prices for insurance. I haven't seen the latest number, but I know the estimates were extorbanent. I mean, it was over 50%. I think when I saw it last, I don't know if they were able to negotiate that down or not, but those prices are high, and goods are high right now. And the fact that we have an opportunity to be able to lower the cost for people in our community, I think we need to take advantage of it.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. When you talked about revenue-neutral versus what's been presented by the city, how would you suggest that we take care of some of the things that they've suggested with the 2 cent and some odd change increase?
Well, I mean, I could go, we could go line-by-line item through it if you want to. I mean, if we've got time, I'm happy to go through it and pick and choose things. Yeah, I mean, we've done it year after year. I think this would be the first time since I've been elected that we would actually increase taxes. So, I mean, I think that we've been able to do it and been able to be at an operating deficit. And, you know, I agree with Councilmember Robinson as far as filling some of those vacant positions at the police department, but it's been years, right? Those are lapped salaries that are there. That money was not allocated, it was allocated, but it was not spent. It probably got spent somewhere else in the department, but those funds were there for police officers, but it just never was spent because we never filled those positions. So that was money that was put in the budget to be able to account for them. There's plenty of ways that we could go through line by, line item by line item to be able to get those expenses down. I'm happy to do it. This is kind of what I do. I was a finance major in college. I do finances on a regular basis. If you want to go through and reduce those numbers, I'll be happy to do it, and I'll work with the city manager and his staff to be able to come up with that.
I think, you know, part of what she's leading to is that we know the ramifications that we're currently experiencing, but the ramifications that are to come, I think, at least from my perspective, because I work in the community at a grassroots level, boots on the ground every week, is going to be a bit insurmountable. We are already having a housing crisis, and we've already had rent increases. And the thought of rent increasing more, for me, is just absolutely scary when I work with not, number one, we have roughly 25% of our population that's making $25,000 or less, right? But in addition to that, the face of homelessness in our community is changing to include what was, at one point, our middle class. And that is now becoming our missing class because they're dropping down because of inflation and all of the price increases and things of that sort. And so, Mr. Edwards, I understand the angst you feel. My stomach has been turning about the process for months because I work boots-on-the-ground with people in the community every single day. And I've said before, becoming a council member, that if we do not address these root issues, you know, we talk about our police, and we want to have those positions filled, but we're already seeing crime rate increase, and we're already seeing more juveniles being introduced to our juvenile justice system. We're already seeing behavioral issues increase in our school system. And so we are already seeing the ramifications of not really being able to address these root issues. What the answers are as it relates to inflation, I don't know. But, you know, it is very heartfelt. These are very difficult decisions to be made, but we have to lift up. We can't ignore it. We cannot hide from having the difficult conversations. I always feel like we're one difficult conversation from understanding, but we're also one difficult conversation from making some progress. And so we've got to be willing to ask those questions that Councilmember Portia just asked, so that we are at least attempting to put everything on the table so that we can make the most informed decisions we can possibly make. I know from having a transitional housing program with professionals with degrees in them, that, you know, this is really scary territory that we're about to enter into. As a community, as a state, as a country, we've got to be willing to have these difficult conversations. And so I, you know, know we've done the best that we can in putting our budget together, but we do have to have these difficult conversations. Again, you know, the bus fare, I actually serve people that pay the Lyft and the Uber fees to go back and forth to work and end up not netting anything or just a little at the end of the day and are literally, you know, less than a paycheck, if that, from being homeless, and as well as those that are homeless, that because they're working but only making minimum wage to $11 or $12 per hour. So, I mean, it's really real, you know?
And let me just say, Council, and I think I said this at our last council meeting in May, is that this is something that we struggled with as staff, because ultimately, you know, we understand the plight of where we are. That's why, you know, we proposed a very significant reduction in the tax rate. And of that increase, over 50% of it, that 2.6% is going towards public safety, just because, you know, the number of runs every single year continues to increase. I mean, we're taxing on our EMS or our safety staff, and then other costs are, you know, inflationary increases that we're dealing with as well. I mean, we talk about the bus fares. I mean, yeah, we'd like to be able to expand that 50% increase on our hours and provide a free service. Yeah, we'd like to do that, but that's going to cost a million dollars addition, of which the FDA picked up 50, so another $500,000 from the city. We didn't pass that through to the tax rate. We didn't. We did what all other local governments in North Carolina are doing. They're going back to charging fare after the CARES PAC dollars are reduced. So, there's a lot of efforts going in to try to minimize the impact.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I appreciate the comments that have been made and really feel, have compassion for the challenges that the revaluation is going to mean for all property owners and especially those who are most vulnerable, our investment property owners. I think it's critical at the same time to understand what our city manager just referred to, which are the explosion in costs to do what we do as a city. And the example I always use is the pipe at our Public Works Department that was budgeted, that was estimated to cost around $3 million and has now come in at $10 million. The revaluation came about because of changed economic conditions. And as Councilmember Robinson described, we have changed economic conditions all around. And I heard, I believe someone's talked about trying to operate at a deficit. That would be the worst thing imaginable for our city, to try to operate at a deficit and to watch our streets crumble. And, you know, one of the things I hear about so often is, please fix our streets. We're trying to do that and still keep the burden, the burden minimal on our taxpayers. Here all the time, you know, we need to make sure we have programs for our youth. We're trying to do that with a budget that minimizes the burden on our taxpayers. We are a growing city. We have needs that we have to do to keep up with the growth and not have our city, our infrastructure, our programs, our EMS and police crumble around us. So it is difficult, but yet we've got to move forward in a positive way that makes sure that we sustain our city and that we're able to serve our taxpayers. And a lot has been said about a revenue-neutral budget. Mr. Edwards, I know you and I talked a lot about that, and I think, I think that to proceed with a revenue-budget, revenue-neutral budget under these economic conditions would be reckless because we do not have revenue-neutral costs. We have an explosion of costs. We are a growing city, and we have more and more needs. I think what our city manager provided us with was a very well-reasoned, modest budget that takes a tiny bit of that revaluation in order to provide funding for absolutely critical needs. Sidewalks were mentioned earlier when Ciara was here and the Multimodal Commission. We've got ADA improvements we can't do right now, even with this new budget, that are desperately needed, that we hear from the public. We have roads that desperately need to be resurfaced and even repaved. We cannot afford, as a growing city, we are now seeing one of the most, I think, just really good times in our city in terms of prosperity and growth and advancing. We cannot afford right now to drop the ball. We also cannot overburden our taxpayers and not be compassionate to their needs. And I believe that this budget is compassionate toward their needs. There may be other things we can do, and we will keep an eye on those, make sure that we perhaps can reduce fares for the buses, make sure that vouchers and CBDG funds are available that can help with housing needs. We just cannot drop the ball on this budget.
Couple of questions. Mr. Manager, what was our excess fund balance at the end of last year, the fiscal year?
Mayor, I would not have, maybe a couple million dollars.
So we have the surplus of a couple million dollars?
That is with a significant increase in sales tax revenues that were very unprecedented.
But, but I would say, I'd go venture out and say with inflation, you're seeing the cost of goods going up, which means that those numbers will continue to go up as inflation continues to go up.
They're not going up to the significance that they saw last year.
We're budgeting it for a certain amount, right?
We're increasing a million dollars for sales tax.
Right. What was, what is the amount of money that we are spending and allocating on our road system? I know that was just mentioned a minute ago, for this year.
This year, we are putting $4 million in there.
Wasn't it six? I thought it was six.
Yeah, $4.3 million.
That includes repavement, that includes, that includes the rehabilitation project, but I think it's about $6 million.
$4.3 with the rehab contract.
But there was, the total was like six, because we did it, I think, at the end of last year when we approved it, didn't we? Wasn't it closer to six?
Yes.
No, I think that the city manager is correct. We spent approximately 2.6 to 2.9 a regular year, but we did get more funding for Fourth Street, which was, I think, 1.1, 1.17 actually for Fourth Street, so.
Okay, so this year, we spent, you're saying 4.6. I swear, I swear I remember this slide saying six. And that may have been, that may have been in addition for some other funding that was put towards it. I know that included like three parts of our, of our street projects, but I think it's, this current budget is just over $3 million. Is that correct for our streets?
That's right. We're increasing, I think, $155,000 in the next year.
So when I guess my point I'm trying to make is, there's no net increase for road rehabilitation with this budget for, as with the last...
Actually, I mean, you're right, because ultimately, if we were to increase what it would take to keep up with inflation, we would probably need another $1 million for street rehabs, in addition to what we're putting in there right now.
Right.
Just to be able to keep up.
Sure, and we're nowhere near that. I mean, I will say, when I first got elected, we were spending a half a million dollars on our road system. And so where we're at now is a drastic increase.
Yeah, but to put that in context with the increase, with a 50% increase in costs of just resurfacing, then that $3 million that we're putting in the resurfacing is really equivalent to $1.5 million a few years ago, because we're not, because it's gone up 50%. So if we stay at $3 million...
That'd be 100%, though.
But if the...
But that'd be 100% increase.
Well, 100% increase. So if 50, costs have gone up 50% and we continue to put around $3 million in there, then we're buying less root street resurfacing.
Sure, and I totally understand that. That makes sense, but to say that we're putting more into our streets because we're doing a tax increase is disingenuous to the people of Greenville that are going to fund that. So I think that's a misconception that by us increasing our taxes, that you're going to get a better quality of service. You're not, right? I mean, I...
Well, I mean, that is why, that is why we tried to stay very, very conservative in the increase that was being proposed, because if we were really keeping up with inflation, we would probably keep the whole 10 cents. I mean, if we were really trying to keep up with the cost increases we're seeing, I mean, we pinched every penny we could to get that thing down to just the 2.6 cents level.
And one other thing, as far as the construction of the sidewalks, this was not the first time that we've ever put money in the budget for it. We put, I think, $100,000 for two different projects, or $200,000 for two different projects, one of which was the Evans Street Old Tar Road expansion.
That's right.
And then the Fire Tower Road one. And we actually let that money sit into the account for so long because they delayed those projects. I think those funds were used elsewhere.
The NC DOT projects, we do have the local match that would include the streetscape on that. And we do have dollars that are set aside to fund the likes of Evans Street and Dickinson and Allen Road that are coming down the pipe. And they're DOT projects that have moved slower, no doubt. But yeah, there is a small amount of money that's sitting around outside in capital reserve so that the taxpayers agree we don't have to cover those projects when they do come to fruition.
Correct. And I'm not here to say that these things aren't warranted, right? But my, my whole purpose of what I'm trying to say is, is that the taxpayers are getting hit hard, right? And every single cent counts. And the fact that we're going to go above revenue-neutral, I just don't think that's the right perspective. I may be completely outnumbered up here, but I just want it to be said that I just feel like we should be at revenue-neutral as a city. I mean, I can't imagine getting my tax bill and seeing a huge increase, even if we go revenue-neutral. I have seen so many different, I look at taxpayers' tax records all the time because I represent a lot of them and I see where they're at. I've seen some that have 125% increases. And if we do revenue-neutral, guess what? They're still getting a tax increase. In addition to that, they're going to be paying a heck of a lot more for insurance than they did the year before. So when they get their mortgage payment after this revaluation passes, it is going to be ugly. I mean, you're talking about people that are going to see 200, 300, 400, $500 a month increases in their bill. I mean, it's going to be ugly.
Can I have a question, if I'm allowed?
Unfortunately, no. Any other discussion before we move on? All right, we will move on to other items of business. Item number 12.
Item number 12, award of construction contract for Fasco Incorporated for Greenville Terrace Improvements. Now call forward, Director, I mean, Projects Manager Mark Nottingham for the presentation.
All right. Good evening again. Tonight, we have a consideration of award of construction contract to Fasco Incorporated for improvements to Greenville Terrace Park. Council members, this project was originally designated to receive ARPA funds. So the list of improvements to the park is kind of outlaid here. This is all included in the scope of the construction contract you're considering tonight. So it mainly involves a building addition to the existing R&amp;G Ron Taff Community Building, also includes improvements to the inside of the building, replacing some smaller playground equipment, paving and reconfiguring the existing gravel lot. equipment, paving and reconfiguring the existing gravel lot, parking lot that's out there, and resurfacing the basketball court with getting new goals and some landscape improvements. So here's a floor plan of the existing building. The red line represents the existing exterior wall. So you can see the building is being expanded by close to 1,000 square feet, brings the occupancy up to about 170 people. We did have some community input that influenced the design of the interior of this building. The kitchen layout will remain the same, and we are including a new kitchen island in this design as well, replacing all the cabinets and countertops, flooring, ceiling, also importantly, adding windows and glass doors to bring some natural light to the facility and some acoustical wall treatments inside. So here's a rendering of the outside of the building, and the timeline puts construction towards the end of August, once summer camp ends at the facility. And then in spring of 2025, the facility would reopen. So tonight, I'm asking for a recommendation is to award the construction contract for improvements to Greenville Terrace Park to FASCO Incorporated in an amount of $1,223,500. Glad to answer any questions.
Me. Question?
Any question?
I do.
Mayor Protim.
So part of the community input was to add a little bit more to the kitchen. I know that you've added the islands, but have you added any more space to the kitchen?
So without, with the, doing the expansion of the building on the south side of the building, we couldn't expand, you know, also on that end of the building.
So it'll expand the kitchen?
So the kitchen remains its, its current size, you know? This floor plan adds an island to the kitchen.
Mayor Protim, when we went up to Greenville Terrace and had a community input meeting, basically, we, we presented a scenario that would have reduced the space within the kitchen based off the cabinetry. We, we heard that, the input, and we went back and removed that so that we do not lose any space in the kitchen.
Okay. So it'll be, it's going to be the same if not.
It's not, it's not reduced as it had been presented to the community.
Right. Yeah, we did originally try and incorporate interior storage in the building for tables and chairs, and that reduced the size of the kitchen footprint. So we decided to take the storage out, move it to an outside building, and keep the kitchen large.
Perfect. Thank you. And this, this price has gone up somewhat since we originally started, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think you're already talking about inflation.
Yeah. Okay. A motion? Do we need a motion? Oh, move to approve.
Second.
Motion to be made by Mayor Protim Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. Move on to the next item.
Item number 13, resolution authorizing contract award for the construction of the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Improvements Phase Two for the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Improvements. Ask Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, to give the presentation.
All right. Good evening again, council. This is a resolution for, essentially for Phase Two of the Public Works Stormwater Pipe. If you recall, back in the end of 2023, we awarded Phase One. We had broken this up into two phases or multiple phases so that we could address the most critical part of this pipe, which has been in Phase One. We awarded that to Phase One to Quest Construction back in the end of 2023. They're underway with the project, and I'll show you a little bit about where they are. Phase One is shown in this figure. This is a somewhat of a progress photo. Phase One, that blue line is 1,500 or 1,300 feet of the new eight-by-eight box culvert, really from Beatty Street to the, to the western portion of the street maintenance building. In that lower right corner, you see the yellow area that's highlighted in yellow. That is their progress to date. All right. Some of the more difficult parts of the project were in the, the area by, by Beatty Street. All right. So they're doing a good job. Phase Two is, is the green line. It's approximately 500 feet of stormwater drainage system, and it will connect to the culvert underneath Skinner Street. All right. And we expect a eight-month construction timeline on that. So some progress photos on Phase One, just so you kind of understand what, what we're doing and what's, what's going on. This picture on the left was taken a little bit earlier today. There is, obviously, they're excavating the area through the trench box, they're dewatering and placing 57 stone and some concrete base for the base of the box culvert. All right. You can see through those horizontal bars, you can see the part of the 84-inch corrugated metal pipe that's, that was formerly conveying stormwater at the site. On the right-hand side is a sticker, I just wanted to show that, that is the, that is one of the box culverts. And the important part of there is the silica fume admix. That is the acid resistant concrete that we're placing at all of the pipes and the box culverts so that it will not be impacted by any of the soil or groundwater conditions at the site. All right. Of note, the approximate weight, that is a, the eight-by-eight box is, this is an eight-by-four box, but it's 13, 14,000 pounds. So each of these boxes are quite heavy. All right. More progress photos, I'll go quickly through these. This is connecting to the pipes underneath Beatty Street on the left side, and on the right side is really the whole construction team is out there discussing some of the upcoming conflicts with our fiber lines as well as water and sewer conflicts. All right. Bottom half, again, their excavator, their very large excavator is lowering the bottom half of the box culvert down into the trench, through the trench box. More, middle picture, more pipe removal there. And then the, that is what the box looks like installed in the ground. You've seen pictures like this before with the Town Creek Culvert, the top and bottom together within the trench box. All right. So we did, City did receive three formal bids on May 10th, and the current contractor, Quest Group, is, was the lowest responsible bidder with a total bid of 2.584 million. Proposed start of Phase Two construction. Now, the Phase One construction, that timeline is 14 months, which brings us into November, excuse me, March of '25, but they are, you know, currently four, five months ahead of schedule. So we're looking at November 2024 for a start of Phase Two construction. They would start that at the end of, at the completion of Phase One. So our expected contract duration is eight months, bringing the completion of Phase Two, that will be completed at Skinner Street to June of '25. Recommendation staff is recommending that City Council approve the following contract, award of Phase Two construction contract for the Public Works Stormwater Pipe to Quest Group for 2.584 million, $2,584,244.60 is their bid. Any questions?
Anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Item 14 is resolution authorizing the contract award for Task Order Six for Construction Administration as well as Observation for Phase Two of the Public Works Stormwater Pipe. The CACO scope of work consists of daily onsite inspection. Quest is operating or constructing this six days a week, 10 hours a day. So that's why they're ahead of schedule. But, so we'll have onsite inspection six days a week. Anytime Quest is working, we'll have staff out there observing what they're doing. We'll also have a contractor doing materials testing, making sure compaction at the bottom of the, where the box culvert is going in is adequate. Shop drawing review, request for information, and bulletin drawings. Again, the consultant team will perform daily onsite inspection for the duration of the project. We expect that this project will take approximately eight months. If, if this is accelerated, which it may be, we would expect to see some savings in this, in this price. But the cost for the CACO inspection will be approximately $643,700. Recommendation, award the Construction Administration Construction Observation Contract to Debbie K. Dixon for $643,700 for the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Improvement Phase Two. Any questions on that? Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to be made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item number 15, reimbursement resolution for the proposed replacement of the stormwater pipe. I'll ask Chief Financial Officer Jacob Joyner to come forward with the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we bring a reimbursement resolution to council for the construction of the stormwater pipe the Director of Public Works just spoke about. The resolution will allow the city to reimburse itself of construction costs paid for prior to the issuance of long-term financing that would be needed to complete this project. Spending is anticipated to start in November, when we're targeting a debt issuance for February 2025. The project is part of the long-range debt plan, and the issuance will include multiple projects. Just for information, the future issuance is targeted for about $1.5 million, which is the amount in the reimbursement resolution. And will also include the build grant projects that will require $8 million of debt for a total issuance of $9.5 million. We recommend approval of the reimbursement resolution, and I'm available if there's any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Next item, item number 16, resolution approving an exchange of property with the Pitt County Board of Education for development and use of a new fire rescue station. I'll call for Fire Rescue Chief Brock Davenport for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Appreciate y'all having me. Hopefully, this will be the easiest one for y'all to consider.
Someone told me it's going to be the hardest, though.
Yeah. I don't know. So what we're asking for is, there's a lot over on Four Lines Road that we've been talking to the, several months with City and Pitt County Board of Education. And this conversation started as a result of us looking for suitable land in that area, the south part of the city, to be used for, to build Future Fire Rescue Station Eight. This is the plot plan here. You see it's bordered by Vineyard Complex here on the left, and then over here to the right is South Central, and to the front is Four Lines Road. This is a picture of the lot from the road. See Vineyard over here to the left and South Central over there to the right. So to make this transfer work for, transfer of the property work for both proper parties, our contribution will be to commit $56,000 in pedestrian improvements, which is another win, one on Arlington Boulevard directly in front of J. H. Rose High School, and two at one additional location, location to be determined based on recommendations from the NC DOT safety study being completed over the summer. So the partnership benefits is that two long-term CIP projects are accomplished for fire rescue, being the acquisition of land for future Fire Station Eight, and two being the construction of a new fire rescue training facility. We would then be able to use earmarked money to build this training facility with the money we had appropriated for buying the, purchasing the land for Station Eight. And then the pedestrian safety is improved at two Pitt County school sites within the So based on the, the searches for vacant land in this area of the city, we believe this to hold a value of between $300,000 and $400,000 for the city. And if you factor reevaluation into it, about $800,000. So. I'm just. So here's a picture of, an example of the new training facility we're planning to build with the funds that would be earmarked for the, the land purchase that we would be saving. And the recommendation is that council adopt the resolution approving the exchange of property, the Pitt County Board of Education for the development of Future Fire Rescue Station Eight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Oh, gosh. I was going to ask, oh, the training is going to be right beside Fire Station Eight? It's all going to be on that one lot?
No. We're, we're looking at some, some lots and talking over with Don Octagon and City Manager to decide exactly where it's going to be at. We have several sites across the city that, where that would house that.
So the land exchange is just for Fire Station Eight?
That's it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Told you it was going to be easy.
And now move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right. Item number 17, contract award for professional services for design and construction, engineering and inspection, CEI, on the Arts District Streetscape Project. I'll call forward Director of Engineering Lisa Kirby for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here this evening asking for council to award a professional services contract for the Arts District Streetscape Project. So the city received a Rural Transformation Grant in the amount of $875,000. This is ARPA funding that we're receiving through the Department of Commerce. The project includes sidewalk and curb ramps along Pitt Street, which are highlighted on the map in green, down near Bonners Lane. Pedestrian lighting along Pitt Street and Eighth Street, those are the red identified areas. And then a gateway to Dickinson Avenue, which would include some kind of columns on the side and an arch over the top of Dickinson Avenue to be located near the intersection Dickinson and Reed. So the city issued requests for qualifications on January 10th. We received two proposals as a result of that advertisement. The selection committee consisting of four of our staff members unanimously selected and independently selected Kim Lee Horn and Associates of Raleigh as the team best qualified for the contract. Right now, we're asking you to award Task Order One, which is design and bid phase services if needed. There is the potential for a Task Order Two when we move into construction, but that'll be a second agenda item. So that said, we're asking council to approve the fee for Task Order One and award a professional services contract for design and bid phase services to Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of $208,000, or $208,695.54. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Mayor Protim Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, say nay.
Motion passes 6-0.
Item number 18, Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11 to the 2023-24 City of Greenville Budget Ordinance Number 23-046, Capital Projects Fund Ordinance Number 17-024, and the FEMA Hurricane Project Fund Ordinance Number 17-002. Ask for Chief Financial Officer to come forward, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening once again.
Good evening.
This is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 11 to the fiscal year 2024 budget. It'll impact the general fund of various capital project funds and the special revenue grant fund. Item A is to reclassify funds to cover additional build grant expenses. This will be no change to the general fund and will increase the engineering capital project fund $102,000. Item B, to appropriate funding from the general fund and the FEMA fund to cover costs associated with the Greenville Terrace Park improvements. So increase the general fund $69,000. We'll increase the FEMA fund $200,000, and the Recreation Capital Project Fund $269,000. Item C will, is to recognize additional investment earnings within the general fund, and that will increase the general fund by $735,000. Item D is to appropriate funding within the Police Department to cover items approved at the May 6, 2024 council meeting, and that will increase the general fund $245,000. We have item E to appropriate funding for the Arts District Project. That will increase the general fund $10,000 and the Engineering Capital Project Fund $10,000 as well. And item F to transfer available bond funding to establish the North-South Connector Project, and that will increase the Street Improvement Bond Fund by $1.5 million and the Engineering Capital Project Fund by $1.5 million. That brings the total operating fund budget to $185.8 million. And we ask council to approve the Budget Ordinance Amendment. And we ask council to approve the budget ordinance amendment number eleven.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to review of the June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council agenda.
So I'll ask that the agenda be put, displayed on the screen for the public to review. Okay, all right, so you might have noticed one of the agenda items is a public hearing related to the CM Epps Cultural and Heritage Center that has proposed the naming of three rooms at Thursday night's meeting. In tonight's video for our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary reflection series, we hear from Alton and Ella Harris about the man from whom the entire facility is named, Charles Montgomery Epps. And we will roll tape.
Oh, Mr. Epps came here, what, nineteen oh three? And coming from the Wilmington area, coming to this area. And the one thing we know about him, he loved the children, he was scholarly in his, and decorum, again, we go back to that, for the children. We heard how he got shoes for the children. He would take them downtown to persons or stores, businesses that would help them get shoes and, you know, he, he was a, he was just a good man, and he, he lived till nineteen forty-two here, and is buried in the Brown Hill Cemetery. I mean, and because of the way, the decorum and the structure and the, I guess I would say, what he offered to us in terms of learning and choice of faculty, you know, always looking and seeking the very best teachers to bring, you know, we just now love him, so much so that we honor him with our class reunions and our scholarships and things like that.
Tell you what, we're gonna actually hate to see this year go away because I'm telling you, there's been a lot of videos, and that's a statement to our PIO, PIO's office to be able to create this content and let the story of our city's history be told every day on the website. So I give a good job to all of them. That's all I got.
All right. Comments by the council? Councilmember Foreman?
Well, you know, I said a bit ago where my concerns were as it related to where we're headed with housing. Last month, I mentioned that we've got Bovier coming in with the jobs for, the nine hundred-plus jobs with the solar company. Just want to reiterate that one way we address our housing crisis is to increase the amount of affordable housing options that we have, but the other way that we can assist with addressing that housing crisis is making sure that the people that need the jobs the most get those jobs. And so I am gonna be like a broken record until we do our due diligence to provide workforce development and whatever outreach is needed to ensure that the people that need those jobs the most get them. And that is all for me tonight.
Very nice. I couldn't agree with you more. Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you. A couple of quick, quick points. I'd love for us to look at painting Fourth Street, as was suggested tonight by one of our public speaker, speakers. I'd like to say just infinite thanks to Donna and Wanda, who are such just great folks to work with, and I'm so glad to see them with an award from the United Way. And I'd like to sort of move into the, the main focus of my comments tonight, which is that this month we celebrate LGBTQ pride. We have a special, a special opportunity this year to recognize what pride has meant to our community when we dedicate the Paddock Club sculpture later this month, which is going to sit right near the Andrew Best Bridge, near Dickinson. For me, this monument has special significance. I have always felt unwavering love, support, and acceptance from the gay community all my life, but especially in the last year when I had some special challenges. And their support and love and acceptance meant so much to me. The artwork that's gonna be dedicated later in June is, takes the iconic spiral staircase from the Paddock Club, and this is where the performers would sort of waft down, you know, very gracefully, and it was a centerpiece of those performances. And the public art that was made from the staircase has wrapped all of the staircase in powder paint in red, orange, yellow, green, blue, and violet colors representing the rainbow. It winds delicately toward the sky, and it is, as public art, uplifting, inspirational, and attractive. And most of all, it stands as a testament to Greenville's character as a progressive, inclusive, and welcoming community. Paddock Club opened in nineteen seventy-three. That was a time of change and growth in our society as it began for the first time to accept openly gay and lesbian people without as much judgment and even outlawing them as had been done in the past. The Paddock Club offered, it began with very humble drag shows, and I've talked to folks who were there, and they said, well, we just kind of looked around and, you know, we used what we had on hand. And if you've seen those drag shows that took place over the years, these were elegant professional performances, and the performers themselves had so much pride in what they did. And it was really, not only was it important to our Greenville community, but throughout the East Coast and even throughout the state, the competitors in the Miss Greenville and Miss Dickinson Avenue pageants went on to compete at the state level, and we have some winners right here in Greenville. Today, we can look at this public art and where, and where the club once stood, and we can take pride, all of us, in the community and what the Paddock Club represented for members of the LGBTQ community, but also for students who went there and who felt safe there and who felt welcome there, and for, for people of all gender expressions and ethnicities and ages who enjoyed their time there. And I would like to say in conclusion to all my gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and queer friends, I wish you a wonderful Pride Month. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to just say again, congratulations to those that were recognized with the city of Greenville today, and our five kiddos who were recognized for their artwork and contributing to the Juneteenth celebrations. And also to our city manager and the work of the staff to take into consideration what we discussed our last meeting and budget things that we wanted to see, adjustments that we wanted to see, and showing that, giving us a picture of what that could look like. We have a lot to think about, a lot to consider, and we'll be ready to make those decisions on Thursday. So thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Do Councilor Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to wish our whole community Happy Pride Month. I'd like to congratulate the Picasso Organization, the Pitt County Aid Service Organization, for all the really wonderful work that they do in our community, supporting people who are living with HIV and AIDS amongst us. And especially personally, they celebrated their ten-year anniversary at the scullery, hosting a drag brunch that funds their general fund, which gives people an opportunity to apply for micro grants to help them with medication, with rent, with utilities, whatever expenses that they might incur that they can't keep up with because of the price of their medications or because of their illness keeps them from working full-time. So it's a really, really important organization, and it also has become a safe space for, for people of all stripes and sorts to come, to be together, to celebrate one another, to learn from one another. One of my favorite parts about having a, a business is giving people the opportunity to be together, and the drag brunch that, that Picasso hosts there is, is a really great example of that. It's straight people, gay people, all kinds of people, old people, young people. I bring my children, it's not a scary thing, it's a really fun, silly thing, really wonderful, happy, you know, I've never seen people happier than, than I see them there. So congratulations to Picasso on ten years and much, much longer of, of serving the people of our community, and Happy Pride to everybody. We had a really great workshop earlier, got to learn a lot about the Pitt County Arts Organization, all the really great work that they're doing in our community, including the, the really wonderful sculpture that celebrates the Paddock Club. And also heard from the downtown partnership about the great work that they're doing in our community with events and, and supporting businesses downtown. I really appreciate both of their, the work that both the organizations are doing, and appreciate council and staff for supporting those organizations with funding and, and other kinds of support. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Representative Laura Stein Brown, thank you for coming down and, and, and being, spending some time with us. I appreciate what you do, all of us appreciate what you do, not only here locally, but what you do more importantly up in Raleigh that serves Greenville and Pitt County. I appreciate you, appreciate your friendship, appreciate all your hard work for everybody down here in Pitt County. Continue on and get us more. You know what we say, right? Grow Greenville greater. Number two, congratulations to those young men and women that popped up here this, this afternoon. Boys and Girls Club is a wonderful place. I learned a lot about it probably about ten or twelve years ago, and I learned a lot that it was just not a babysitter for our youth, but, but basically influences that are making young men and women out of the kids that come in there. And so if you've not seen the Boys and Girls Club or not been there and judged Youth of the Month, I think Councilmember Black, I mean, Daniel, you just judged one, didn't you? Youth of the Month, Youth of the Year?
It ended up being Spelling Day.
Okay. It's a wonderful organization. I, I encourage you to go take a look at, at the clubs and see what they're doing and get involved with your time or your resources. Next, Coach Godwin, you had a great run. I'm sorry you didn't go any, any further than, than what you did, but you played some great ball, and congratulations to all the, the baseball team. And I'll keep saying it, he is a tremendous baseball coach, but he is even a more tremendous person because he's making men out of those players, not just great baseball players. He's, he's much more influential in terms of what he's doing in those young men in life, so congratulations to him on a good run. Next, congratulations to our employees that got recognized, and also the Pirate Fest who got an award and jumping up the vendors almost seventy percent. What an amazing event for the city of Greenville. Also, we've got some special recognition tonight. This afternoon about two-thirty in Morehead City, in the, the Big Rock, we had some local people that won the biggest marlin today, at least the first one in, and it was a really unique situation because it was three generations fishing together. Pete West, Chris West, which many of you may know, he served on the planting and zoning, and their son Spencer that caught the marlin. And also with him was Bill Brown from Brownwood. And then to make it even better, it's a classic captain, Ron Whitaker, which I've known for forty years. He is a classic waterman. He is not the, the multimillionaire that owns the boat, he's the man that's scrimped by and loves the water and has made a, barely a living as a, as a captain for over forty years, and he is retiring this year. And so what a send-off to be able to bring that fish in. And also want to give some props out to the Big Rock. They have donated over ten million dollars to charitable organizations since nineteen eighty-six. So they do research on the fish that they catch, which is a good thing, they help preserve the species by that research, but the profits and, and everything that comes in goes back into the community locally, which is always really important to me, and ten million dollars since nineteen eighty-six, basically not in about thirty-seven, thirty-eight years. And finally, you know, I can't end without saying this, sports complex. I want people to understand one thing. Every weekend, we don't have a sports complex. We are losing between eight hundred and a million dollars in revenue that could be spent in this community. And it just lodged in my mind because I drove all the way to Virginia in, near Burkeville, Virginia, which is about as far out as you can get to shoot a sporting class tournament, and came back in through Rocky Mountain, and I saw the sign for the sports complex, and I'm thinking, we've got to pick up our pace to get quicker, to formulate the committees and move forward, because again, just one event, according to all the stats and everything that our, our people that are doing this study, is eight hundred to a million dollars. If you have two events, which the sports, sports complex is capable of, that would be potentially a million and a half to two million dollars over one weekend spent in Pitt County and the city of Greenville. And that's not including the hotels that would come and the retail merchants and everything. So I hope we'll hopefully pick up that pace, because if you look at it that way, it ought to spur some of us to action to do a little quicker, because I always complain government moves like molasses going uphill in the dead of winter. It, it's just slow. I know we gotta do, do our due diligence and everything, but I hope we'll quicken the pace. Mayor, thank you for letting me get on my soapbox right here at the end. I appreciate the opportunity.
And the good news is, I think that I heard I might have got this misconstrued a little bit, but I think we are all gonna be out competing in the Big Rock next year, sponsored by the Robinson Law Firm. Is that true?
Well, look, I'd love to have everybody that's gonna get on the boat and fish, you know, not everybody might appreciate being seventy, eighty, a hundred miles offshore in it rocking, and, and sometimes that doesn't sit well. My, my youngest daughter is evidence of that. She rode for the first time on Saturday, and she told me she threw up three or four times, but after that, she said she really enjoyed the trip. So yeah, we can, we can make that work.
And, and I'm sure our attorney could figure out a way how we could hold a public meeting with all of us present on the same, on the same boat, right?
I would love to see all of us on the same boat. It'd be an entertaining time to see.
Live, live broadcast out in the middle of the sea. I like it, okay.
Home in the Big Rock, Greenville City Council. Be it first.
There you go. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels.
So I'd like to first start with some birthdays because I love my mama, and my mother and her twin sister turned eighty years old on June second, and I'm so grateful that they're both still here. I would like to wish my... Okay. I would like to... Oh, okay, okay. I would like to also wish my Aunt Dee Dee Carney a happy birthday. I'm not gonna tell you how old she'll be tomorrow, but tomorrow is her birthday. I have to skip this because of the mayor. And this month is actually African-American Music Month, along with the celebration of Juneteenth. There will be a lot, a lot of celebrations throughout Pitt County, North Carolina. I encourage you all to take some time to celebrate, to educate yourselves, and to just learn more about the Juneteenth holiday. And I'd like to read something. Oh, I'm sorry. So the Salvation Army, I like to say, feeds the homeless each Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning from eight AM to ten AM. That will, that meal is free of charge, it's a nice hot meal, so if you know anyone that is in need, and they don't have to be homeless, there just has to be a need. So again, that's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings from eight AM until ten AM. This week, while we were feeding, a young lady passed out, she had a seizure, and I have to commend our EMS and Fire Department, their timely response. I went in one door and came out the other, and they were there. So it, it was, and they were very understanding, empathetic, and treated her with the utmost respect and dignity, and, and I thank you for that. And a lot of times as a council, we, people come to us with concerns, people come to us with things that we don't do right, that they want us to do better. And some people have been along, around for a long time, and they fight, as Councilmember Robertson said, government can sometimes be slow. And I know one word that we've used a lot tonight is intentionality, to be intentional about the work that we do in this city, and recognizing all nationalities, all individuals, all communities. And since my time on the council, one of the biggest concerns has been north of the river, and that is my district, and so the concerns have been flooding. And so I just want to quickly read you an email, and I won't state the person's name because I didn't ask their permission, that made us feel good today to know that our Public Works Department hears the concerns, our city manager, and, and all of our staff. And even though sometimes it can be slow, we're working on it. And even though sometimes it can be slow, we're working on it, and it's gonna happen. It says, "I hope your morning is starting off on a good note. If not, I'm going to make your day. I'm the person who not only reports the bad news, but also reports the good news in the neighborhood too. I want you to know about the good job your staff and workers did on the job at Greenville Terrace on the project of installing the new stormwater pipe between my house. First, they informed me that they were going to begin the work. Then, as they worked, I introduced myself, and we developed a relationship. Through the whole work process, I watched and saw how they worked together as a team. They concentrated on their jobs and worked smart as they were working in their, worked hard as, if they were working in their own yard. They seemed to have a good relationship with one another. They completed the job with a beautiful landscape. I only wish I could have given them a bonus. I gave them from my heart a big thank you and wished them God's blessings." The team consisted of Nathaniel Coltrane, Nathaniel Smith, Von Bell, and Quincy Portia. Another big thank you to you, Mr. Mulligan, that is our Kevin Mulligan, for getting this job done before we had any big storms. I saw the corrugated pipes that came out, and they were terrible, so I'm sure the new pipes will help with our drainage problem. May God bless our city leaders and city workers who take care of the whole city as they work to improve our city with good-looking neighborhood, because our motto is good neighborhoods help make a good city." So I just wanted to share that good news from one of our constituents tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very nice, nice. Before I jump to my comments, I'd like to open the floor up for our attorney, Mr. McGirt. I don't know if he has anything he'd like to say to us.
Yeah, anything at all?
Goodness. Y'all trying to put me on the spot?
Better get it right, too.
No, hi, we're just, I'm just giving you a microphone.
I would like to wish my lovely wife Dorothy a happy wedding anniversary. Y'all must be on Facebook, but, um, we've been married thirty-five years on today, so she's, she's a lovely, lovely woman, lovely woman.
Yes, she is.
Good news, you get to sleep in the bed tonight.
She's not gonna be mad at you for being here, is she?
Hey, that's why I gave him the shout-out.
For saving you up here. All right, got it.
Every man, every man needs a crutch.
Thank you, Mayor. Council.
All right, I'm gonna be nice and quick. I want to say congratulations to my daughter's ten U team, softball team, that I have the privilege of coaching this year. We won the Pitt County Girl Softball League Ten U Championship, so we are the champions, back-to-back champs, two years in a row. If you did not see me, I was at the softball field all spring long. I've got a lot of gray hair right now, a lot of gray hair, a lot of dirt in it too, so, but I've enjoyed it, it's been fun. As Councilmember Robinson had said about Cliff, there's no better joy than coaching young ladies or young men and teaching them the game and teaching them things about life. So if you get an opportunity, make sure you take advantage of it. With that, I'm gonna kick it over to our attorney again to take us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven eight-three for the following reasons. To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney, including for the purpose of the public body, considering giving instructions to an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim or judicial action. Secondly, pursuant to the same statute, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuits. Eric Stephen Farrington, Greg DeMamrose, plaintiffs versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education defendants. Second lawsuit, Chase Jean Matthews, Jackson Olson, Alexander Pascoe, Tiffany, Tiffany Shaw, Mark Owens Jr., Barbara Owens, Matthew Allen, and Jessica Louvender individually and behalf on all other similarly situated plaintiffs versus City of Greenville, Phil Berger and his capacity as President Pro Tem Porree of the Senate, and Tim Moore in his capacity as a Speaker of the House of Representatives defendants. And third lawsuit, K L A Holdings LLC petitioner versus City of Greenville, a North Carolina Municipal Corporation respondent.
So moved.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.